Please join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, we're pleased to begin by proclamation honoring Glenn Engelsgard and Mr. Prosser. Would you please post the podium?
Good morning. Eric Prosser, Chief Information Technology Officer, County Administrative Office. Today, I would like to describe to you a fellow who has been dedicated for 38 years to information technology. His name, Glenn Engelsgard, and he is a nerd. He is that scary guy who comes to work every day and whistles that happy song. He is the guy who looks forward to Monday mornings so that you can get, he could get busy and help people. Many of us just wish that we had enough coffee to get us to lunch. But Glenn truly enjoys his work and his attitude spills out and influences those around him. And this has gone on for 38 years, almost as long as I've been working. Or actually, it's been as long as I've been bored. Glenn began his career in Tulare County, March 24th, 1969, in the data processing department. He single-handedly was in charge of all modifications and upgrades to our county financial system, AFIN. And in fact, while Glenn was helping to upgrade into a new version of AFIN, he was caught sleeping on the couch for three days straight. We had to send him home. So as I said before, Glenn is that guy who's dedicated to his work. Glenn also designed and implemented probation's first accounts receivable system to track all probationers' restitutions handed down to them by the court. He created and implemented the personnel applicant tracking system for the county's human resources department to track the county's personnel application process. Glenn was instrumental in designing and implementing the grantee grantor and vital statistics application for the clerk recorder's office. And last, Glenn worked during the elections as the hanging Chad checker during the days of the hanging Chad. Today, Glenn and his wife are looking forward to doing some well-deserved traveling. They will be living on the east coast during the summer, during the summertime, and return back to Tulare County during the winter months. Glenn always came to work every day with a smile on his face, welcomed each new challenge with a positive attitude. Anytime he was asked to do something, to help someone, he was always ready to and willing to lend a hand. As a quiet presence within the IT organization, he imparted his knowledge and expertise to everyone willing to learn and also listen. And he has been a mentor to many and a great friend to all. Glenn, you are a valued asset and will be greatly missed, as well as you missing each of us. Congratulations on your retirement, and we wish you well on your travels.
When Eric Prosser indicated he slept three days on the couch, I think he meant he slept not during his work hours. I've seen reticent people, but Glenn, you fit the, you're just a personification of what I think, as you described him. You know, he's the last person to come up to receive his reward, but it's people like Glenn who, of course, make this county work. And as we're honoring employees today, it's a nice time to be honoring him. And our thanks to him and to all the employees that he represents and embodies in Tulare County because they make this county work. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to, one of the great things we get to do as supervisors is to honor those of you who are present today as employees who have been nominated by your department heads for outstanding performance. The last two weeks, we have been honoring people who've had 15 years of service, up to 35 years of service. That is the continuity of Tulare County. You are the people who give 100% to your jobs, and we certainly appreciate it. Today, I'm going to not name everyone individually, but I would like your department heads to stand up with you. I'm going to introduce you by department. The Act Commissioner, Mr. Conkle. The Assessor Clerk Recorder, Mr. Harcastle. Auto Elections and Purchasing, Rita. Office of Extension Service. Workforce Investment Department. And the largest group we have in the county, Health and Human Services. I'd like to bring it back to the board. Ms. Conway?
I think there's, as we honored the employees the past couple of weeks for their continued service, I think there's no greater honor, I think, than to be honored by your fellow employees, to be nominated from your department. At least, that's the way I feel personally. So that tells me that it's not just the daily dedication of showing up every day and doing what, doing the task. It's more than that. It shows, it's your commitment, it's, it's all that is envisioned in an honored employee. And to be recognized by your peers and then to be here before us, I think is, speaks so highly of each and every one of you. So I just want to thank you. I appreciate everything that you do every day for us. As I said last week, I think you are the face of the county to, to the rest of the constituents and residents that live here. They see us, they don't care about us, they want to see you because the work that you do on a daily basis means so much to each and every resident of this county. So I'm very grateful, and I'm very honored to be here with you today as you are all honored, and thank you very much.
Just, just one thing, besides being the face of Tulare County, you're the constant. Especially Glenn back there has probably seen this board change over many times in his work career. And in my short time, I've been watching this board, I've seen the board change over, but you're always here. And you're the ones that people count on when they pick up the phone. They know you're going to be there, they know you're going to take care of them, and I appreciate that because we will come and go as, as elections come and go, but you'll be here. And I appreciate the hard work that you do. And again, you're the constant, you're, you're the faces that the people see, you're the voices on the other end of the phone line, and that's appreciated. Thank you.
I already probably said enough, but I just wanted to comment on something which Supervisor Conway brought up, and that is that you're here being honored, and competency obviously is, is part of that, but more so, I think, than that is your relationships. And when you think about a job, the time you spend with your work family, sometimes it exceeds that which you spend with your, your natural family. And so to be in a job where you appreciate others and they in return appreciate you makes for a work environment that is one that, I hope you enjoy coming to work on Monday mornings, I hope you enjoy the time that you work here, because life is too short not to enjoy your work environment. And so we just do want to thank you because you bring that attitude then of, to others that makes for a, a kind of workplace that people want to be at. So thank you for what you do to others, thank you for what you do in terms of your influence among your peers, the people that you work with every day, because that's very, very important. Without that, the ability to help our constituents is, is greatly compromised, and so thank you.
You know, and I was going to school, this had been many years ago.
Yeah.
My teachers, my teachers and counselors told me, no matter what field you go into, go into a field that you thoroughly enjoy because that's what you're going to do for the rest of your life. And that's why, when you're nominated by the people you work with, that you're doing the best job possible, there's no higher, there's no higher award you could get. I mean, that's, that's the greatest. But you must enjoy your work, and it spills over and it shows, and when you enjoy your work, you do a whole lot better job. And thank you so much for what you do for this county. Thank you.
My shorter experience than Supervisor Ennis. I remember once I was the president of an organization, and it's always an honor to be the president of an organization, but I was named that year in that organization as the outstanding member. And I think because it's an award given by your peers, and it's not an elected position, that meant more to me than being the president of any organization. The other thing I'd like to mention is I'd like to personally thank you all for doing such a great job that I do not get many phone calls. And that's very important for us elected officials. But without a doubt, you are what makes the county run. And by you giving 100% every day when you come to work, it's reflected on our county family. I'd like to thank you very much from the bottom of my heart, and I'm sure the rest of the supervisors express the same feelings. So thank you very much, and we're going to take about a five-minute recess. Oh, excuse me. I get so wound up here, I forget what I was putting.
The unveiling.
The unveiling part of this. Not only annually do we recognize our employees, but we also, once a year, name our Employee of the Year. And this year, I have the pleasure of naming that employee who was selected from you as a group. So this year, I'd like to name our Employee of the Year is Sharon Cher Castellini. I think Cher is very surprised, and I would, I would like to have our County Council, Kathleen Bales-Lang, give a brief bio.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I couldn't be more delighted to give you this information. Cher started work for the county in 1998 as a family support officer in the legal division of Child Support Services. She attended College of Sequoias and obtained her paralegal certificate in 1999. And in November of 2000, it was a happy, happy day when she transferred to the county council's office, where she currently works as a paralegal for the research, a resource team. She has many varied assignments, including review and preparation of contracts, research, drafting of ordinance code amendments. Cher is the only one in the office that really knows how to do an ordinance code amendment from start to finish. Research and opinion writing, preparation of pleadings and templates. One thing that's very important to me, as you remember, three years ago, I was the incoming president of the County Council's Association of California, and I was interested in setting up a loan repayment program for deputy county councils. So of course, I turned to Cher and said, find out about loan repayment programs. She came back with a book. Eventually, she actually drafted legislation. I reviewed it, I assure you, but she drafted it. That legislation was put forward first by the County Council's Association, then by CSAC. That became Assembly Bill 171, which is passed out of the assembly and is going to be in a hearing next week before the Senate. And while all those people were important, that all started with Cher. In my office, the three immediate prior Employees of the Year are a committee that selects the Employee of the Year for, and reviews the criteria, and I wanted you to see what Cher's peers had to say about her. Takes on everything, professional and cheerful, rarely misses work due to illness, keeps others grounded, extraordinary ability to think ahead, will do what it takes to get the work done, and can do it all. Perseveres in a crisis. She's calm, while the rest of us are, as you see, running around like chickens with their heads cut off. She helps everyone, she's intelligent, patient, hardworking, loyal, friendly, and I like this one, able to pull rabbits out of hats, really. And this is, of course, Cher Castellini. Cher is married to Steve. She has three children, Amanda, who just graduated from high school, will be starting college in the fall, Matthew and Rebecca, who are both still in high school. She encourages both academic and athletic achievement in her children. After work, you can find her either in tutoring sessions or softball or band practice, and on the weekends, she usually can be found in the ballpark cheering on one of the kids' teams.
Cher, could you stand there for just a second? I'm going to say to the board.
Oh, before we get going. Cher, if, if the description is even half true, how exciting. So you, in fact, you sound like a woman that needs to be on my frequent contact list. It hasn't happened yet, but it, there's, the day isn't over. So congratulations to you. As I said, it's probably so nice to be honored by your peers, obviously well-deserved, and thank you so much for all that you do for Tulare County.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, and I guess for the first time, I'm meeting someone busier than Connie Conley.
That was not jealousy speaking, actually, it was not.
But it sounds like you've got your hands full and you did a wonderful job. Thank you so much.
Cher, as I heard the description of what you do, I thought, we could probably let a few attorneys go in that.
It's because of her we don't need more. Spoken by a fellow attorney, yes Supervisor?
It's because of her we don't need more, Mr. Chairman.
One of, just a comment, congratulations to you, but I think what's, to me, insignificant also, is that you have achieved this in a relatively short period of time. I mean, you've worked for the county for eight or nine years, and, and you've been recognized for your abilities, and it's just a, it's a great thing about a meritocracy, you know, where people are measured by their merit, and, and cream rises to the top, and you've done that in a very rapid way, and congratulations to you. Thanks.
You've sold all my lines. No, it is, it is quite an honor, I would imagine, to be the best of the best and voted by the people of this county, is the best of the best, and good luck to you, and thank you so much for your hard work.
Before you run off, I do have a plaque here. I'd like to make a comment that there are two photograph banks that we have in this building. One is a rogues' gallery of all the supervisors. Then we have another set of photographs that are right next to our office, as you enter from the street to our office, is the Employees of the Year. And I think your photograph will be there as long as our photographs. And I don't think there's any greater honor than being where we're going to put your photograph.
Hey, but there's some, there's also some financial pecuniary benefits with this thing too, right? She gets something out of this.
I believe she gets vacation. She makes a week's vacation.
I know you get a plaque.
Not that I'm always trying to, to tell everybody what to do or anything. Better photo. Much better photo, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Cher was too shy. This is Steve Castellini over here, her husband, who came to surprise her today.
As you notice, public comments aren't required in Tulare County. So with that, I'd like to take a five-minute recess. Thank you very much.[1404.76]
She's coming forward, so just wait, she'll come to you. This is her desk right here, so she'll come to you.
So it's going to mine, so. Yeah, you know, things kind of look like that, but that's hard to say. Well, what do you know, if you're curious, you have to come up with that. That's the bad thing about being live.
I know.
You're really just sad. Imagine learning to jump in.
So who's going to, who's going to handle that? Al, who's going to handle that? So does he introduce Al or does Al?
I introduce Al. You said, you're getting assertive in your old age. Moving to item three, we'll have our purchasing agent, Mr. Al Guzman, introduce this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Haddix. I'd like to present Sam Castile, he's with the, he's the National Program Manager of Public Sector Western Region for Office Depot. And actually, he's a Visalian also. He's born and raised a Visalian. And so is the person in charge of the Fresno office, Scott Jacobson. We worked together about three years ago to start a program called Alliance, where we would pool all the purchases made through Office Depot in one pool and then off of that, we would get a rebate of a percentage. Last year, we got a, a check for 3% and this year, it's a lot more. So this, this time, I'd like to turn it over to Sam.
Well, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, Supervisors. It's always nice when you have money, huh? Again, I want to thank Al for spearheading this and real quick, I'm going to go over the, I'm going to hand out checks, rebate checks on the U.S. Communities Cooperative that we believe are in attendance. And just to give you a recap, last year versus this year, 2005 sales for the Alliance was $4,593,000 and a rebate awarded to the group for $134,850. 2006 sales, $5,338,09 with a rebate check a little bit more than double than what you guys received last year, which is a total amount of $319,848. And with that, I'm gonna, I'd like to award the, the lead agency and the chairman, county supervisors, your check for $78,574.
I don't think there is a lot of campaign.
Sam, I was just going to ask you, it doesn't say Al in a sheet on there.
It does not. I don't check it. And then, well, real quickly, because I know you're pressed for time, we'll go through the list and if the agencies that are here, as I name them, if they could come receive their check. Visalia Unified, $69,746. Porterville Unified, $39,286 and some change. Tulare County Department of Ed, $24,482.35. Lindsay Unified, $14,390. Yeah, Tulare City Schools, $13,104.77. Tulare County Superior Court, $11,400. Cutler Rossi Unified, $10,970. City of Visalia, $10,462. Farmersville Unified, $6,500. Burton School District, $7,553.25. City of Porterville, $4,023.35. City of Tulare, $3,695.10. Woodlake Union High School, $3,336. Exeter Public Schools, $2,350. Woodlake Union High School, Housing Authority, I know they're here, I saw them, $1,861.18. Strathmore Union, $1,643. City of Exeter, $1,100. City of Woodlake, $1,049. And that's, did I miss anybody?
We have the City of Lindsay, the school district here.
School district is here. And I know that check is here somewhere.
Just take the biggest ones.
That was a last minute, Jamie couldn't make it a day. No, I think there is one missing. I will find you out. I apologize. All right, and again, on behalf of Office Depot and the U.S. Communities Program, we would like to thank Chairman Supervisors for allowing us to present this today.
Well, thank you for the program.
You bet.
We're going to insert something into our agenda today on a public safety issue. Calvin Foster, Jeff Hawkes, would you please approach the podium?
Good morning. I feel a little short up here. I have no money to give away. But I do have an urgent message to the county, to the county residents and the people in, in this room right here, and that is to please stay away from the Thule River downstream of Success Dam tomorrow, all day. I want to thank the board for giving me an opportunity and the Corps an opportunity to address the board and Tulare County residents. My name is Jeff Hawke and I'm the Public Affairs Officer for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in Sacramento. I have with me Calvin Foster, who is the Southern Core Projects Manager. One of the projects that he manages is Success Dam, where we're preparing to do a seismic remediation project at the dam. And as part of that preparation, we have to test our ability to release flood level volumes of waters, water or flows from the dam. So we're going to be doing that tomorrow. We also need to collect data that we'll use in the design of the seismic remediation fix. Starting at 4:00 a.m. tomorrow, we will begin gradually releasing water from the dam. By about mid-morning, we'll have some very high flows, will reach approximately 3,000 cubic feet per second. That's five times the, the normal summer release and it will create some more dangerous conditions on the river. Again, we urge Tulare County residents and visitors to stay away from the river all day tomorrow. I want to compliment the local coordination provided by the county and by the city and by the state. This has really been a joint effort to get the word out, to ensure that we're protecting the public, informing the public, and doing everything we can to make this a safe event. The event will last about 10 to 12 hours. We anticipate that we'll stop the releases around 4 o'clock tomorrow afternoon, but there is a lag time for that adjustment or that, that stop of releases to make it downstream. So we expect high flows into the early evening. I think that's about it for me. Calvin, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that we'll start that release at 4:00, at 4:00 a.m., but it'll actually be a 500 CFS release and we'll run that for a couple of hours to get a chance for that water to get in the system. Also, to hopefully make sure everybody is out of, out of harm's way. And we will ramp that up by 500 CFS increments and about a 30 minute, every 30 minutes, we'll keep stepping it up. And we'll reach that 3,000 for a peak period of maybe three hours and then we'll start staging it back down. And this is, we've been at this flow at least five times since the dam was constructed and actually, the last time was in 1997 and at that time, we went to 3,200. So we're going to be a little bit less than what we were in 97. But again, the cooperation and the support from the county has been excellent. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
I had a question. When you had the 30, when you had those higher releases, were there any flooding problems or was the channel able to handle the flow in the past?
Actually, there was a couple of issues. One, in the City of Porterville on J Street, it actually washed out the approach to the bridge and that wasn't so much the big volume as it was an eddy that was created by some rocks that were, were in the river channel there. Additionally, further west, and I think near Woodville, there was actually a breach in the, the bank and it flooded a walnut orchard. Again, I think that may have been rodent activity that was, played a big part of that. But we're, we're working with not only government agencies, but also the irrigation district and we're really going to watch it close. The channel has been dry for quite a while, so this flow, it's, it's going to soak up a lot of it. We really just don't know what that 3,000 is going to look like. We don't expect it to be what it would have looked like in 97, simply because the channel is so dry.
Yeah, and I think the biggest concern there was all the debris that could be in the, in the channel and getting built up against the bridges and I think Laura Thule is going to have all their equipment at all the bridges standing by.
That's correct. And we've got actually, again, the cooperation has been excellent on this and getting kind of staging. They'll be monitoring the bridges. I have my staff that I'm going to have also kind of coordinating that, the communication plan in place. I think early in the morning, provided it's available, the CHP helicopter will be flying the, the river channel using the infrared to ensure that we have nobody in the channel. Again, a great cooperative effort and we appreciate that support.
Also, we will be able to, we will have people downstream monitoring the situation. We'll be able to report to us if they do see a problem. However, and we can adjust our flows, we can stop our flows, however, there will be a lag time until we see that downstream.
I plan on being, being with you guys tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'll be there also. We'll have our surfboards. Before we take up our timed items, I'd like to take up the consent calendar. And item 21 needs to be amended. Where we are not setting a public hearing, this matter does not require a public hearing. Are there any items that board members would like to consider separately?
Motion to approve consent calendar as amended.
Second. Motion second, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, moving back to the public hearing, we have to make an adjustment that we're going to take item four prior to item five.
Item five prior to item four.
Oh, excuse me, item five prior to item four.
Okay. That is helpful, thank you. Actually, I'm going to be making a presentation on item four as well as a portion of item five and they will be taken together only because they are this, for the same project area. And then another staff member will be making a presentation on the remainder of item five. Item four, the one that I'm presenting and part of item five, will be one public hearing and then the remainder of item five will be a separate public hearing, opening and closing the public hearings as you see fit. And then after both items are completed, there will be one motion to, for the two GPAs and then there will be a separate motion for the change of zone. So that's the way that, that's my understanding how this is going to go. At a regular meeting of the Planning Commission on April 25th of this year, the commission considered a tentative map, TM 792, for the development of 320 residential homes on a 93.85 acre site. Included for consideration was also a change of zone, PZ 06013, and a general plan amendment, GPA 06009. After considering all the evidence, findings and conditions of approval, the commission determined that the proposal for development was appropriate and approved the tentative map. The commission also recommended that your board approve the requested general plan amendment and change of zone as modified, as modified, which is before you today. And my name is Charlotte Ressuelas with RMA, I'm sorry. The subject site is located on the north and south sides of Avenue 308, west of the intersection of Avenue 308 and Road 76 in Goshen. This is a portion of the tentative map located north of Avenue 308, which is phase three of the proposed development. And this is a portion of the south, south portion of the site, south of Avenue 308, which consists of phases one, two and four. This is the whole project, albeit quite small and difficult to see. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment to the Goshen Community Plan to change the land use designation from community commercial to residential on approximately 20 acres of the subject site, which is outlined in the dotted lined area. The site is located both north and south of Avenue 308. The applicant is also requesting a reclassification of a zone on 80 acre, approximately 80 acres of the 93.85 acre site from A1 agriculture and AE 20, exclusive agriculture, 20 acre minimum, to R1, single-family residential. As you can see, the majority of the site is zoned A1 with a small portion of the eastern portion, portion of the site is AE 20. And there are two, two parcels, this parcel and this parcel, which is also AE 20, but it is located outside of the Goshen UDB area and is not part of the requested zone change. Here's an aerial of the site. This is Avenue 308 looking west. Avenue 308 looking south and southeast and looking east on 308. This is to the north side of 308, Avenue 308, looking north and the entrance to the northern portion of the site. These are photographs, which are small, but it shows the northern, northern site, which is mostly vacant. Approval of the tentative map by the commission is not effective until the general plan amendment and implementing change of zone have been approved by your board. In addition, the Goshen Community Plan is, is currently being updated and the proposed designations are designations are consistent with the staff-level recommended designations for the site. And that concludes staff summary. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Have one quick question. So with the exception of the two small AE 20s on the southeast corner, this is all within the current Goshen community urban boundary development plan?
Urban development boundary area, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions, board? Okay, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Those wishing to address this issue, would you please come forward? I have one request from, oh, excuse me, that's the next public hearing. Mr. Olmos?
Good morning, board members. I'm Mike Olmos. I'm with the city of Visalia. And your staff has kept us informed about this project, and so we've been following it. And our only concerns pertain to the industrial park, and to be sure that the developer and the county are cognizant of the industrial park, which is nearby. Our comments have been mainly directed at protecting the industrial park and being sure that, as this property develops, that they're sensitive to potential impact from the park, and noise, and traffic, and all those other things that are typical of industrial park activity. We have, this portion of the industrial park along Road 76 is the one that's receiving the most activity now. There'd probably be about a million square feet of buildings completed and that are underway now, and also that are coming in the future with developments coming up along the, near the BF project. So just wanted to make you aware, the city remains concerned that any development that happens along this area may impact the industrial park, and that the projects be designed so that any impacts on these homes with respect to the industrial park are considered. So that's all I have. And again, I appreciate the fact that the county staff has kept us informed on this, and we continue to work with your staff on being sure that land uses that are done in the area are going to, are not going to impact each other adversely.
Mr. Chairman, this might respond. I'm very confident that we will be able to work these things out, and as we live in a society that becomes increasingly urbanized, and in our desire to protect ag property, we're going to see more of this. And I think it's also part of the concept of smart growth that you have, mixed uses. So the idea that the back 40 somewhere, you put the industrial park away from everybody else, this really is, almost harkens back to an earlier day when the packing house was by the railroad siding, and the houses surrounding the packing house provided the employment for the packing house. And in a sense, I see an opportunity here, too, for people to live and work in proximity to home and work very closely. And in today's world, the ugly smokestack is no longer the ugly smokestack. And as I look at industrial parks today, they are like parks, as much as they are industrial. So I'm very confident that there will be a mutual benefit here, both to the industrial park and to the people who will live in this development.
And your staff has been aware of it, and they work with us very closely on this, and we appreciate that cooperation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that did bring up two others. I see there are a whole bunch of little AE 20 parcels off to the right side there. Are those meant to provide the buffer between this R1 and commercial use?
I don't know. The community plan is being updated, and that zoning and land use designation may change as well, so.
Okay. I'd like to bring it back to the public hearing, and then we'll bring it back to the board.
This will be real short and sweet. My name is Jay Belt of the Quadernov, and I represent some of the builders. Exactly your question, AE 20 along the east side of our proposed site, is kind of a combination light industrial, commercial use even right now. There's several residences there as well, and we do see that as a nice buffer zone that will probably, as Goshen extends its general plan amendment in the future, that'll probably be established accordingly. Also, the one thing we wanted to comment is Avenue 308 through the middle of our site that runs east to west currently has quite a bit of traffic. We've sited on units on the south that'll give us a nice housing development look to the whole street. And also, as future development takes place in the city, in their industrial area, that road that's going to be coming from the east is going to be a right turn only, they say, on Road 76 that will take it to Regan Avenue, which will be the major access for trucks to the highway, just in case that comes up. That was one of the things that we've thought about. I think overall, you're looking at a big boost to the community of Goshen. And much like Charlotte said, the idea of people, or like Mr. Worley said, the idea of people living near where their potential work is outstanding, especially this community. That's it.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this matter? Seeing no one, the public hearing is now closed. Can I bring it back to the board?
Mr. Chairman? Because item five has to be decided before item four, I think you'd want to have the balance of the presentation regarding item five, and you need to vote on item five and then on item four.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one additional question for staff as well.
Okay.
You know, on the negative deck, you've checked the less than significant impact on schools, and we have a letter from Visalia unified stating the exact opposite. Has that been taken into consideration?
Was taken into consideration at the planning commission level, and it was determined that the fees paid at, the fees, school fees that are going to be paid.
Makes that the less significant, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're going to reopen the public hearing, and this would be for both items. I guess we're going to specifically address the general plan amendment.
Yes, sir.
Dave Bryant, Division Manager with the Tulare County Resource Management Agency, presented for your consideration today, GPA 06005, which is a request by Mangano Homes to file for a general plan amendment to the Visalia area plan, land use, and urban boundaries. The subject property is located east of the intersection of Road 124 and Liberty Avenue, Avenue 264, south of Visalia. This general plan amendment is being made at the request of the applicants to enable the 113 acre site, which is identified in red, to convert that site from a former golf course into a single-family residential subdivision, including common areas and public facility areas. The site is generally surrounded by agricultural uses to the north, to the east, and to the south, some scattered rural residential properties to the west. The applicant has requested this general plan amendment to change the land use designation from rural residential and agriculture. Currently, the site, north of the red line, which is the existing Visalia urban area boundary, currently designated as rural residential. South of the existing urban area boundary for the city of Visalia is currently designated as agriculture. In addition to that, the project would be included entirely within an urban development boundary, and within the urban area boundary that you currently see in red would be adjusted to pick up the southerly portion of that 113 acre property. In addition, the amendment also repeals text in the existing general plan to require development in conjunction with the former golf course. In addition to that, there is a subdivision tract 354, which was built in 1962. That is also included as part of the amendment due to the fact that the subject property is, completely surrounds that particular subdivision. The site is currently zoned plan development RA. In 1982, the Board of Supervisors approved zoning in condition with a planned unit development, which at that time would have provided for mixed-use development of approximately 206 residential units, zero lot line development in conjunction with the former golf course. That project was, however, never developed. This general plan amendment was considered by the Planning Commission on March 28 and April 25. The Planning Commission, at their April 25 meeting, approved the general plan amendment and referred it as a recommendation for approval to your board. This map here is reflective of the proposed general plan amendment. The site, highlighted in yellow, would be, again, the land use designations would change from rural residential and agriculture to plan development, and would also extend the urban area boundary that's highlighted in red to include the entire property, and then include the entire property, again, the black line, which would be representative of a new urban development boundary. I'd like to point out that this general plan amendment, at the time of filing, the applicant also filed for a tentative map and a plan development. That is currently pending before the Planning Commission. The tentative map will be referred back to your board for final approval, since at the time of filing, the entire property was not included within an urban boundary. So your board would be required to take final action on the tentative map. The plan development, however, like a special use permit, would be considered to be final unless appealed at the Planning Commission stage, and would provide for the application of urban development standards for the property. As a final note, again, the Planning Commission action is pending due to two circumstances. Number one, they are awaiting for your decision on the environmental impact report, which is included as part of the general plan amendment today. And also, the applicant, staff, and the city of Visalia, we are currently undergoing discussions in regards to the application of design standards and looking at evaluating options for wastewater treatment. Those discussions are ongoing, and there is a continued public hearing before the Planning At the conclusion of the public hearing, the staff recommendation is, as one action, adopt the requested actions that are included as per item number five, and to adopt the actions as requested in item number four as a single action. That concludes staff presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I do have, I believe, one. And the letter dated March 22 from the city of Visalia, item, well, we've numbered it, six on the back page, talks about connection to the city of Visalia sewer system.
Yes.
Is that a viable option, again, at one time? It was a desired option, it was rejected by the city of Visalia? Is that back on the table?
Those discussions are still ongoing. That's one of the options that we are discussing currently with the city. We're basically looking at three options. One would be the utilization of septic systems. One option would be the utilization of a package treatment plant, and the other option would be connection to the city of Visalia sewer service. As an additional option, if sewer service is not immediately available from the city, we are looking at the possibility, as part of Phase 1, for the tentative map, to utilize septic system with dry lines that could connect to the city's service in the future, but require the city sewer as a part of Phase 2.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and I have a request from Mr. Nick Velardi. Could you speak?
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening to me. I've attended most of the Planning Commission meetings.
Could you give your name and your address?
Okay, Nick Velardi, 26423 Mullenex, and that's on Sierra View Golf Course, or what used to be Sierra View Golf Course. And I went to most of the Planning Commission meetings and listened to all the planning going on. And first of all, we'd like to appreciate, say, our appreciation for Mangano Homes for working with us and keeping us informed as to what's going on and what's planned, and the steps that are taken. The concerns that I told them before were the fact that they're going to put 170 homes there, and you're going to get 170 subject tanks right off the bat. The cities will take 10 years to hook up the sewer, no doubt, or maybe a year or less. So you have 170 subject tanks going to be pumping, and then you have the traffic that's on what's called 264 Liberty and 124. And 124 is a shortcut between Visalia and Tulare. And they've done traffic studies out there, and we appreciate the traffic studies. They said that they're going to set it up for a stop sign or stoplight, as well as turning lanes and everything. There have been two deaths on that intersection in the last four years, due to the fact that people speed from Visalia to Tulare and Tulare to Visalia. And the traffic is a concern, when you have traffic from 170 homes spilling into that intersection, and then across traffic and everything, without a stop light or stop sign, that is a concern. They've offered, Mangano has offered to put one up, and we would probably like to have that, if the traffic study does show. We do support the subdivision as it stands, 170 homes. We'd like less. If they can go half-acre lots, that'd be good, but we know we're in a profit and loss society, so the more homes they can put, the more they'll like to put. The other concern was perhaps a green area, more green areas along the railroad tracks, landscaping that can be used in the future as a bike path, equestrian path, or whatever, between Tulare and Visalia, which would be nice, and hopefully that's planned in the future as well. Perhaps another park, since it's going to be an urban development, more greenery inside there. If it's rural residential, then obviously you could have bigger lots and less homes, and that would be acceptable, too. But basically, that's our concern, is all the septic and the traffic, that will affect the few of us that still live in that subdivision. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Dushida, members of the board. My name is Robert Dowd with Mangano Homes, 1005 North Demerian Visalia. A couple of comments. One, I wanted to start off by thanking staff. I know that they've worked diligently with us. We've had several issues that we needed to resolve, and we've worked cooperatively towards those ends. Also, I wanted to thank our immediate neighbors. They've worked diligently with us, they've met with us at least on a half a dozen times in formal meetings. I need to apologize to them. I know that particularly as we transitioned the ownership of the golf course and the previous owners to ourselves and running Embardis, there were many inconveniences and some pressures that have been put upon them, and we apologize for some of those lapses. But I do want to talk a little bit about the specific map itself, too. And I know that what's before you today is simply the general plan amendment and the environmental or secret compliance document. However, as Nick pointed out just a few minutes ago, we have worked diligently on this map, and there's any number of ways of carving up the property, but 176 lots is a fitting compromise, and it's something that we would ask that you would support. And we anticipate a lively discussion with the Planning Commission, and we understand that we will be back for a final hearing relative to the map and potentially the PUD before your board as well. So we look forward to that. It was mentioned by staff that until... Was mentioned by staff that in 1982, a 206 condo project with a golf component was approved. Unfortunately, that project did not withstand the test of time. It was never financed and subsequently never built. Would also like to comment relative to sewer issues, and it was, we had met early on with the city of Isalia about two and a half years ago. At that time, the city council authorized for us to pay for a study with their engineering department and outside consultant to come up with a capacity analysis, right-of-way design, and all that was done. And in fact, Mr. Cox, we do have a design for a forced main that could tap into the city's regional system. However, it was determined that it was not in our best interest to have the city of Isalia on the critical path as it related to design. We found ourselves between too many pressures with, between the neighbors and the city and county staff. Having said that, it's still a desire of ours to hook up to the city sewer, but of course, that's something that we do not control. And we have done some extensive studies, and it's included in the environmental impact report as relates to geotechnical soils that are there, and the environmental health division has reviewed those and has determined that septic systems would be appropriate. It would work fine there. Irregardless, we would develop the subdivision to city of Isalia standards, including the existing subdivision that is there. We intend to rebuild those streets. We anticipate that as a condition of approval. Likewise, we would sewer the entire subdivision and provide for that future connection at some point when the city line is available. So having said that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have of me. Okay. Also with us, we have some engineers and environmental consultants that were, provided consulting services for that environmental document, that are here to answer questions that you may have.
Mr. Chair, I did have one question from Mr. Dawes. One of the comments, one of the letters was about the connection between Teleri and Isalia that would potentially run across the east side of the property. Is there a right-of-way there to accomplish that?
Yes, there is. There's currently one user left on that portion of rail between Isalia and Teleri. I think there's a reasonable expectation in time. The use for that rail may in fact go away. What we have done in the short term is created a 15-foot easement and then access and a planting plan, so that that could be utilized actually now as part of the subdivision. We actually have a bicycle plan throughout the subdivision, which utilizes that corridor as well. So it'll be developed in the short term, but we'll have access right-of-way for the long-term plan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any others wishing to address this issue, or these issues? Seeing none, we're closing the public hearing. Bring her back to the board. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. These are two significant projects. I mean, these are, of course, we're not at the project stage at this point, but obviously letting themselves to moving in that direction. But I know for the community of Goshen, this represents the potential of adding another 50 percent to the population by this one project. And I know the city, many of the people of the city, or the community of Goshen, I had a priority slip there when I said city, because obviously that's the goal.
How forward-thinking of you.
That's the goal of many people in that community, is to become an incorporated city, and part of becoming incorporated city requires people. And so this project will, this amendment will lend itself to the development of that property, which is, I believe, underutilized property now and would make a higher, better use for that property, and I look forward to that happening. I think the other project in the rural part of the county is one of those situations why it's necessary to have some flexibility, because while we wouldn't go out and start a subdivision out in the middle of the countryside like that today, the fact of matter is that we have an existing subdivision, we have an existing land use, which is, lends itself to the proposed development. So I'm very supportive of both these projects and would support a motion.
Mr. Chair, if I could also, I know that the applicant has worked hard with our staff and with the city of Isalia. One of the things early on, when I heard about this project, was to make sure that it would be built to a city's standards. I'm very confident that will happen, as, and I look at this, I see green, I see open space, I hear about bike path built into this. The one gentleman that lives out there talked about the size of the lots. As I look at this, I think every one of the lots are larger than the existing lot, just about all of them are larger than the existing lots there. So I think you're getting larger lots in many cases as compared to what's there. I'm glad that you were able to work with the other property owners there and improve those streets and roads inside of the existing subdivision. And I'm very hopeful that you'll be able to work something out with the city of Isalia to, instead of having 176 new septic tanks, to work on this forced main and hopefully make that work before this project is, starts building. So I'm very supportive of both, and I do see a buffer, a built-in buffer on the Goshen side with the AE20s that are on the east side of that, and support both these actions.
I have a question. Mr. Bryant, it was presented earlier that we needed two motions, one to accept the public hearing.
There's one motion, I believe, on item five, where we, it's, both items are together. This is the one time we do the general plan amendment, so they're both consolidated into one action.
That's correct.
So it would be a motion to approve item five, and that would be the items one, two, three, and four, set forth in our agenda.
That's correct.
That's, that would be my motion.
Second.
Moving seconded, please cast your vote. Vote is unanimous in support. That's a motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four? Zone change?
For the staff presentation on this matter, if not?
Staff is recommending that you certify the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared for this project and waive the second reading and adopt the zoning ordinance amending ordinance number 352 for the change of zone number PZ06013.
And as my mentor, Mr. Maples, used to say, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of item four, items one, two, three, and four, that's the Maples version, as requested by staff.
Second. Moving seconded, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to untimed items, we have a presentation on the freeze relief.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Haddix County Council, for the record, my name is Donnie Griffin, Director of Human Services. Some months ago, you might recall that we chatted about the freeze release effort and exactly what we were doing. I told you that we would come back to you with an updated report on the activities of that task force. And before you, I see is, at the end of this presentation, is a reaffirmation of the emergency. And so what I'd like to do is introduce to you the person who's going to make that report today, somebody you know very well, Carolyn Rose, is Executive Director of CSET. You might recall that she recently was selected Woman of the Year by the Isalia Chamber of Commerce, and we're just very pleased to have an opportunity to have her on our task force, and she will make the presentation before you, and then we'll come back and answer your questions.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. The human impact of the freeze, we'll probably never know the full human impact in scope or in depth, but we're going to share these facts with you. Over 3,000 UI claims, over 1,000 DUA claims, nearly 10,000 requests for service at our three designated one-stops, and 1,246 families applying for public assistance. We share these facts, knowing that thousands more have suffered and have not asked for help. And what we can't share with you are the feelings, are the feelings of fear and anxiety and deprivation that farmworkers and farmers have experienced, facing the threats of lost livelihood. But it's that intangible that has inspired your task force to do its very best in providing freeze relief. Your actions, on behalf of our community and the task force, thank you, Art Teleri County Board of Supervisors, for leading the way, for establishing the task force, for declaring the emergency, for working with the state to get aid. And here we have special thanks to Supervisor Conway for all the work that you did at the state level supervisor, to get the significant and timely response from the state. For traveling to Washington, DC five times to work with the feds in getting support. And so there, I think, some special thanks to our Chairman Ashida for those cross-country trips, Chairman. And I think you've been very successful also, members of the board, in assuring that the public has been aware through excellent media exposure. And finally, I want to thank you for dedicating county staff, led by your CAO and his office, led by the Health and Human Services Agency, to support the task force and to mobilize all needed county services. Thanks to Donnie Griffin, David Crawford, for co-chairing the task force, and to John Davis for his leadership and support. And I want to mention a couple of up-and-comers who just did wonderful work for the, with the task force, Jeff Blackman and Christina Jones, for their hard work. Thank you all. You stepped up quickly, and I believe you showed the rest of California how it ought to be done. The task force, once you had called it together, which, very, very quickly, which was very important, formed eight committees. They were formed to address the needs identified as critical for the community. The first committee, the Employment and Training Committee, this was co-chaired by Robert Alcazar of Proteus, Natalie Haynes of the Workforce Investment Department, and I think we almost have a third co-chair here in Marcia Becerra from the Employment Development Department. So thanks to these fine people for their leadership. One of the outstanding things accomplished, I think, was 360 temporary jobs, which were created by several cities, churches, and the Workforce Investment Board. And these 360 temporary jobs have been filled by farmworkers, a very important part of the equation of freeze relief. Second, we had our Agriculture Recovery Committee, co-chaired by Jim Sullins of the UC Extension, and Nancy Pitliano representing the Farm Bureau. This committee has been very important, functioning as a liaison between industry and the task force, and it has been providing us with the industry analysis that helps guide our other committees in planning what is needed in freeze relief and what the future holds for those needs. The third committee, the Housing and Utilities Committee, co-chaired by Dan Ramirez of Proteus and Lily Rivera of CSET. These two organizations, Proteus and CSET, have provided rent utility and mortgage payments totaling over $2.5 million. And many other organizations have also provided similar services, and I think we really can't not note that Southern California Edison has really stepped up to the plate and provided over half a million dollars in rate relief for utility payments. That's been outstanding. Our most pressing current need is for rental and mortgage assistance. Almost three and a half million pounds of food have been distributed, thanks to our Food Distribution Committee, Kay Truesdell and Kathy Lamp. Kay of the Food Link Board and Kathy of the UC Extension Services have co-chaired our Food Distribution Committee. This three and a half million pounds of food distributed by Food Link, representing a 200 percent increase over what was distributed during the same period last year. This was made possible by 45 pantries, largely staffed by hundreds of volunteers throughout the county. They have made this possible. Our fundraising committee, co-chaired by Ernie Hernandez of United Way and Jane Kleinsheimer of Land of Lakes. This committee has collected over $1 million to be used for various types of freeze relief assistance. In addition, we want to thank United Way for serving as the fiscal agent for the task force. Community outreach chaired by Graciela Martinez of Proyecto Campesina of the American Friends Service Committee. Graciela and her committee have reached every community in our county. They have distributed information and they continue to provide outreach, identifying groups of people who may not have yet accessed needed assistance. And our Public Information Committee, co-chaired by Nancy Roliva of Health and Human Services Agency, and Eric Coyne, your very own Public Information Officer. I have to say Nancy and Eric have led a wonderful campaign that has generated outstanding media support, both print and broadcast. Think to this day, many papers, including The Times Delta, are keeping the story alive. Radio Campesina keeps in touch with the workers, and all of the local television stations have run special stories to highlight relief needs and show the faces of the freeze, workers and their families, who are essential to our economy. In addition, a freeze relief website provides continuous source of resources. And volunteers chaired, a committee chaired by Mary Ann Lawrence of Health and Human Services. Volunteers are the lifeblood of any relief effort. For food distribution alone, the estimate is 28,000 volunteer hours. We're going to show you now a list of community partners. Our list is long, and we know it is incomplete, and we are working on developing a more complete list to present to you in the fall. Now, we have a list of 108 organizations and individuals. Join me in following it, elected officials, the county, of course, cities, service clubs, foundations, the media, state agencies, churches, community-based organizations, and generous individuals. All of these people have made the freeze relief work that we're doing possible. Without their contributions, we could not have helped as many people as we have. Want to take just a moment to ask all of the committee co-chairs and chairs and members of committees, just to stand to have you see them. We're joined by many of them today. And what's next? We have two recommendations. One is your consideration of continuing the task force as an ongoing structure that would be available to you to respond to any emergency that requires a full community response. We believe that the structure is there, that if you needed to call on us to mobilize a broad scope of community participants, that we would, we would stand ready to help you with that. And the second is, we would request that you reaffirm the emergency declaration. The task force continues to assess and try to project the impacts and needs for freeze relief over the next three to five months. The intensity of the need has diminished, but some families still need help, and we're trying to gauge that and be able to report back to you how, what, what we believe will be that continuing need over the next months. And finally, I want to thank you again for your leadership, and I want to say thank you to the people of Teleri County, a caring community, a resilient community. Agriculture and its workers are at the center of our economy, and we appreciate your perseverance and capacity to keep on going when the going gets tough. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we will at this point entertain any questions or comments that you might have.
Bring it back to the board.
I have a question, and it's just kind of following up on Carolyn's last comment, which is, I know when we started this process, our concern was that unlike Katrina, something where you have, you know, one big event and then you start the cleanup process, our concern was for the ongoing nature of this, where work is lost, not just for a short period of time, but perhaps clear until next fall. And I'm just curious, what is the status now? Carolyn alluded to the fact there were still some. Is the work situation improved? Has there been an adjustment, people finding other kind of employment? What is the status currently?
I'm going to ask Mr. Sullins if he would join me on that question, and while he's making his way up. I can tell you that there has been a significant effort in filling a lot of jobs and taking care of the gap in the employment industry, but there is going to be a lingering effect to this. And Mr. Sullins had been keeping a pulse on that and made some reports to that, and I thought maybe, Jim, you might share what you have shared with the task force, with the board.
Thanks, Mr. Griffin. And I'd welcome the ag commissioner stuff up here at any time if you would like to step in.[682.11][682.11][laughter] And I'm sure Chairman Ashida is well aware of the situation. Jim Sullins, UC Agriculture Extension, we have been chairing the ag and industry recovery committee, and thanks to the ag commissioner, who's been keeping very close tabs on what's going on in the packing houses, and through Farm Bureau and representation to labor contractors and such, we try to keep a good feel of what's going on in the industry and far as labor. We're certainly coming to the end of the navels, and Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're down to eight packing houses now. They're running...
Got ten at the moment that are full-time.
Ten that are full-time, and even ten at full-time is running four and five days and partial hours. So there's certainly a lot of people that are in the packing shed industry that are still out of work and are dependent on unemployment, except for those packing sheds, the larger ones that may be transitioning. You know, we have some that go into the other commodities as the summer goes on. As far as our farm worker, the itinerant worker in the fields, there is certainly still another need in the rest of our industry, the grape industry and the tree fruit industry, and we're hopeful that more will be moving in as that labor increases. However, it will certainly still leave a gap, probably until October, November, when we anticipate that the rest of the need will be there. One item that we'll carry forward, Chairman Ashida, is our observations on lemons. There's going to be a significant amount of our lemons next year that probably will not bear a, probably be a highly reduced crop next year, particularly those lemons that are below 400, 500 feet. We're severely hit and set back, and we're expecting, right now it looks like to be only about a 10 to 30%. So we're going to have some workers that are dependent on the lemon industry that they're going to be impacted into the next year. And whether that would be considered a full-fledged emergency, that's up to the board. But I would anticipate that the emergency status, we still have needs, will go into November.
Chairman, if I might, just to comment, thank you, Mr. Sullins, for that. I think it's important, as we look at renewing the action that they had to renew the declaration of emergency, that we do focus on what you've just described to us. What are the continuing needs? Because people respond to needs, and if they don't know, then they'll be less responsive. And so I would encourage that kind of reporting and information so that people understand this problem does go on, the needs still continue, and efforts are still necessary.
Good question. I noticed that our unemployment statistics for the county overall are up. Can we assume that that's partially related to all the things we've just talked about?
Partially related, and if we were to make comparisons, and we have made comparisons to this time last year and even the previous years, you do see a marked difference, and we can generally accredit that difference to the freeze.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. When Supervisor Worthley and I went back to Washington DC for the first time seeking freeze relief, I was extremely impressed on the organization of the Freeze Relief Task Force, probably because we've had a couple other instances in the last 20 years that have helped formulate this task force. But it's a lot easier going into Washington DC or the state of California, asking for relief from any major natural occurrence, disaster, if you're organized. And I know a lot of times when these events happen, that the elected officials and the staff of the counties or the cities involved walk into situations, sitting with your United States senators, and really, all we have to say is "help." But there isn't any direction to that help. We were fortunate, because of the task force, we had the direction and we knew where we needed the help. So it really puts us as elected officials at a comfort level because of the ability of the task force that was, that had been established in years previously. That's why when Carolyn asked for this ongoing program, I think it's very important, and it's important also to homeland security for other reasons, that I believe Teleri County is probably one of the best-prepared counties in the United States to go forward on any disaster because of the work that has been done by all the volunteers and our staff that have worked on this project. Makes us awful proud of the fact that we can go into a place and ask for relief and not act confused. We know exactly what we're doing. It gives the confidence of the people who are in charge that we will be good stewards of the disaster relief that we do receive. I think we have a very strong reputation now in Washington DC and the state of California that Teleri County is prepared for disasters, and I think it's a very good place to be at. So I look forward to looking into the ongoing continuation of this group, because you'll never, we never know when we may need it. And as an orange grower, I thought my 100-year freeze was in 1990, and I wouldn't have to worry about another one like that for the rest of my life. Now, it's been two more. So we just never know what the next day's going to bring. I think one thing we learned from this disaster relief and what we asked for in Washington DC, the city of Lindsay went back with us to Washington DC, and they pressed mainly for relief in the form of monies to put people to work doing public assistant jobs, cleaning up the cities, cleaning up the county. And they felt that it was a lot more effective to use the money that way versus giving grants and unemployment and other usually cash benefits. I think it's proven to be a fact that it's probably the most effective way to deliver relief is to provide employment. So we will stress in the future on disaster relief that we look at the public employment side of keeping our people employed. It gives them a better attitude. We have less mental and law enforcement issues when that happens. And then when I look, watch the television about Katrina or these other natural disasters, well, you see people around, but they're just around. Then you see the pile of junk that's sitting there that they have to clean up. Well, these people are most likely on some type of cash relief, but the disaster, the aftermath of the disaster is still there. So why not put people to work assisting in cleaning up those disasters, or put people to work in the public sector to catch up with the things that we haven't been doing in the past? So I, as one board member, am very proud of the job that the task force has done, and I see a continuing need for the task force. So thank you very much.
And just to, just a comment to support our chairman, he was such a good salesman. I was there when the senator brought out our checkbook and wrote a check for $1,000 to the relief. That was Senator Feinstein.[1188.64][1188.64][laughter]
You didn't ask for another zero? Mr. Chairman, I got one quick comment also, actually two, I guess this speaks volumes about global warming and...
The freeze?
Yeah, the freeze.[1202.08][1202.08][laughter] We have three 100-year events in 10 years. Second thing, something that is a little disturbing, as you look at the freeze-related unemployment benefit claims, those actually don't count towards our unemployment rate. When you look at over 3,000 people filing for unemployment, the inequity is, they really don't count as far as our numbers are concerned, and so it, in the long run, costs us because of that policy that changed here a few years ago, that disallows us from counting farm workers or agricultural workers and public...
Government workers, isn't it?
Government workers from the unemployment numbers. So as we see the, all the positive reports about our unemployment rate in Teleri County, it does not take these people into account, and that's unfortunate. I know we receive some of our funding through the web based on those numbers, and it's unfortunate that that's occurred. I don't know what, you know, how long it would take to undo inequity like that, but that's something I think we ought to look at in the future for our legislative platform.
Do you guys comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Carolyn, thank you so much for a complete report and also recognizing all the participants in that. You look at, it's an overwhelming situation that impacts, you know, anywhere from our farmers to our farm workers to public agencies that work with these folks. But the overwhelming outpouring of compassion and community involvement and all that went into this is, makes this supervisor know that she's living in the right place. But that being said, I couldn't agree more with the comments that have been made, especially about even if it's loosely, keeping the task force just in touch, just ready to go, so that whatever the situation is to Teleri County, and by that I mean all of you, is ready to respond, whatever the issue is. So I'm very appreciative of all this hard work. The statistics are, it's kind of overwhelming. You know, we've heard it, we've seen it, as you mentioned, there's been a lot of publicity, but in the final impact, when you sit down and look at those numbers, it's pretty overwhelming. So much appreciation for all the hard work and the cooperation, which is a great word that we all learned on Sesame Street, but cooperation is number one, and that's great that we could all work together for one common goal. Thank you so much.
Chairman, I would also like to thank all the individuals out there from the communities that put on all their time in the task force. I know coming out of the private sector and going through two of those freezes and in business, it affects everybody. This doesn't affect the people that are working in the fields, it affects everybody. So thank you so much for what you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
The motion? Mr. Chairman, then? If we need a motion, I'd be...
Yes, we need to reaffirm the state of emergency.
Yes, I'd move approval.
Second?
If you cast your vote, motion passes unanimously. The last word on this, this popped in my mind, I think this time when we had this disaster, we had a lot more private people participating than we have in the past, and I think that's commendable to the residents of not only Teleri County, but San Joaquin Valley and even other states that came in to help us. Okay, moving on to item 24. Mr. Prosser.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Prosser, Chief Information Technology Officer, County Administrative Office. I do want to say one thing before I get started here this morning. I'm bringing something before you that really is causing change in our county, something that's a little bit different than what people like to do, and change is a hard thing. As we kind of look at information technology, it is one of those things that is kind of like the power or the lights in our house. It's a service that is provided, so it's not one of those things we typically talk about. So I'm going to try to keep it pretty focused here, and we'll get through this as we go. So one of the things I wanted to bring before you first is to give you an idea of where we're heading with our mission and values in information technology. Our mission is to provide accurate, reliable, and timely solutions. This is key to actually being successful in providing a service. So what goes along with that? We have values that we actually take with us, customer-driven public service. This value is critical in making IT actually function for the county. It is one of those things that we have to completely focus on as an entire organization, and if we don't, we're going to miss the mark many times. Another piece of this is proactively addressing issues and problems. This is basically the space of discipline. Discipline is making sure that we get these things done correctly the first time and that we address things before we get notified about them, so we watch and pay attention to those things. Next is providing state-of-the-art functions and productivity efficiencies. This is our quality that we bring to the county. As a service, we need to make sure that we're bringing things to the county that you guys are asking for, departments are looking for. We have got to be the experts bringing that forward to you. Promoting and sharing the exchange of information. This kind of talks in a space that I would consider a great place to work. I know many IT people will do different things, and they tend to be a little crazy. They actually exchange information or are very good at doing it. Results-oriented to support business goals at Teleri County. Results is the bottom line. We can't be successful unless we have results. So that moves me into a little bit of history that I would like to give you. Some history, kind of going backwards in time a little bit, in 1989, the county outsourced all of its IT functions. Back then, IT was basically a mainframe environment. Now, for those of you who don't understand what a mainframe is, it's a big computer that sits in a back room and has to be air-conditioned, and essentially, you have a computer terminal that sits on your desk that really does nothing except talk to the big computer in the back room, if you will. Now, what occurred was in 1991, technology began changing and networks came on board, and these microcomputer things really started to take off. And so in the county, we amended our contract to include the network and microcomputers. So as IT has matured several years down the road, we've been in this now, I think, close to 17 years, and several departments have absorbed IT functions, creating a decentralized organization. Basically, what that means is we have a lot of IT people in a lot of different places. So in 2006, your board approved the position, my position, the Chief Information Technology Officer, to bring back continuity into IT and back for Teleri County. So following notice, the ACS contract expires June 30, 2007, with a six-month window of notice for transition. And over the past year, I have been planning this transition, as well as what we are going to do as far as consolidating IT into a, back into a centralized organization. So some of the questions may come up of, well, why are we centralizing IT? One of the first things I did in coming in here was hiring a company to bring us a third-party, non-biased opinion of what we ought to do with IT and where we're going with it. The recommendation came out of it that we ought to pull in-house what we currently have and move into what we call a selective outsourced model. And what that basically means is that once we get everything consolidated in IT, we can then look at what makes sense to begin outsourcing. And sometimes it does make sense to outsource pieces of it, and sometimes it does not. So let's go into why centralize IT. One of the things here is single-county-wide focus for technology direction and collaboration, eliminating duplicate efforts. In a nutshell, this means that we're just bringing everything together. Cost savings with advantage of economies of scale through partnerships with our vendors. One of the examples that I can think of is... One of the examples that I can think of is office productivity software. Right now, we purchase software on a one-off basis. We're not doing things countywide in that space. Another area, network operating systems. Now, we are actually doing this now where we are working with the two major agencies in the county with Novell, and we're procuring it that way. Another example is enterprise applications, document imaging. It is another area that we may want to look at to see, are we doing this countywide? Are we doing this as a single one-off entity as we push forward? Web application development as well. This is another one of those areas that potentially has the ability to go in and do things as a county versus doing things separately. So, another area, cost reductions by eliminating duplicate technology. And one of the perfect examples of this is our data centers. I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but we do have several data centers in the county. To list off a few and to give you an example of what a data center really requires, a data center requires specific air conditioning for computers that are in that room. So, it does cost money to put those computers in an environment like this. Centralizing it makes much more sense, it's much more cost-effective. So, here's our data centers. We have one in the basement in the courthouse. We have one out at Government Plaza. We have a disaster recovery site across the street from Government Plaza. The Sheriff's Department has essentially a data center down in the basement of their main headquarters. We also have a data center, I believe, in several other areas throughout the county. So, these data centers are various sizes. Two of our largest are in two major buildings that we have. Another area is network equipment. Network equipment, we are actually supporting two completely separate data networks today. It's kind of interesting. Normal counties don't typically have two different networks. That pushes us into the environment of Tulare County. Tulare County has a whole lot of places that exist. We've got all these different buildings and connection points, is what we call them. In those connections points, some of them are shared, so some of them are shared with the two entities that are existing, putting those networks in place, and there's physically two separate systems that need to allow for that to occur. There are efforts that could be consolidated and potentially reduce costs in this space. Servers is another area that we can reduce costs with. In fact, servers are moving into an environment that we're getting into what we call virtual servers, which is you have a single machine that used to be just a standalone box that would have things run on it. Now, that machine can actually have 10, 15 machines on it running, and they're all separate, completely separate systems from each other. But the benefit of that is a lot less expensive, but we're also consolidating things in a much smaller space, and it just makes more sense as we move that way. One of the last items I brought to you this last year was the storage area network, or our SAN. We happened to buy the same product that HHSA has in their data center, which actually saved us some money in doing so. And this is an area, basically what a SAN is, is a big hard drive, and that big hard drive houses all of our data, makes things a lot simpler for backing up and so forth. So, moving on to another item, staff in isolated silos, being able to collaborate and share experiences to develop promotional paths for their careers. When we have a decentralized model and you have several people in these one-off areas, what you end up with are great positions when they first start, but as these people move up and top out at the end of their areas, there's nowhere for them to move around. The department only has maybe one or two spaces they can go, whereas if we have a centralized IT department, we create an entire web of areas that people can move around in if they so desire. Another area, services will improve by simplifying the IT environment. This is just one of the things that's right off the top. We can easily just improve our current environment just by simplifying it, and this is one of the big hitters for that space. Initiate a single line of communication to departments. Essentially, this would be coming out of the IT department, being able to communicate with other departments. We have a single voice. And that kind of leads me into, by centralizing the IT department, we provide leadership with that one voice to enable Tulare County to adjust to any of the new trends and totally take advantage of emerging technologies. So, what will it look like? This is essentially what this organization would look like. As we consolidate, what areas does an IT department have? This is pretty standard for different counties around the state of California. This is also pretty standard for IT in general in the corporate environment. So, as you look across here, you see the Chief Information Technology Officer, obviously at the top of the organization. The next line you see is the security office. Now, some may ask, why a security office at that level versus down where the others are? Well, I don't know if you guys read the paper or not, but there's an awful lot of stuff that goes on that people like to get into, and if they have the opportunity, they'll take advantage of it. So, we need to make sure that our doors are locked and not allowing those who don't need to get in, get in, but we also enable our current environment for people to be able to do the business that we need to do. So, it's that security office that controls that mechanism. Now, moving into the below items, you have the administration office. This is kind of your business office, grant writing, bringing in budgets and so forth in that space. You've got the customer support area, and this covers your help desk or your service desk space, the people who are embedded into the different departments, actually providing them information for what they're doing. It's kind of that consultant role for the environment. As well as training. One thing that we don't really do here in Tulare County is training, and training is huge in the IT world. In order for our employees to be able to be smarter, better adept to their environment, and as we push into the IT world, as we are now getting into, we have got to provide training to our employees to help them become more efficient. By doing so, we can do that with little classes that are one, two-hour type classes to get some of the essentials out to our environment. And as it changes, which IT is, a model of change constantly, that's what will occur. Project Management Office. They refer to this sometimes as the PMO, if you've heard or read some of the words that are out in the technology world. The Project Management Office basically is your area that allows you to be successful. So, they make sure all the boxes are checked off when you're pushing through projects. They're making sure that things land appropriately, and they're making sure people do the tasks that they need to do. And then lastly, in the Technology Office, you're dealing in the space of people who manage data centers, who are managing the network, who are managing servers. These are the guys that are keeping the lights on. They make sure our systems are functioning, connecting, and working. So, now we get into some cost comparisons. So, what are we paying today? We're currently paying today about $6.7 million for our contract costs with ACS. The yearly projects that typically happen on an average over several years has been about $1.3 million, which is in addition to the current cost of contract. The hardware and software maintenance is included in the contract costs, so we don't necessarily pay for that separately, totaling of about $8.1 million. Now, if we compare that to what I'm proposing to you is to pull things in-house so we can consolidate IT and then begin looking at the outsourcing model once that occurs. Labor costs for that, coming in-house, are, I've estimated, high numbers at $4.5 million for that labor. Yearly projects are included. We don't have to hire any more staff than staff right here. It doesn't cost us anymore to do yearly projects. The hardware and software maintenance, I've included in this, just to compare apples to apples, it runs at about $1.2 million for that cost. Thus, $5.7 million and a net savings of about $2.5 million as we look at this comparison. Another comparison, looking at the total consolidated IT costs. Now, this is taking into account the entire county, not just what ACS is doing for us today. Consolidated IT costs, all in-house. We take the MIS organization, which exists in HHSA, $3.7 million for their salaries today. Now, I have a star by that, that is subvented funding, and it does not come out of your general fund. The proposed in-house cost, which is $4.5 million, and by the way, there are a few subvented dollars in the $4.5 million, it is about $500,000. The telecom and radio group runs at about $1.5 million, and other IT-related groups or folks that are around the county totaling to about $9.5 million to run the IT organization. Now, if we compare that, we asked ACS to propose something for us back in January to give us a benchmark of what we were looking at in the future. So, if we stayed the same, nothing changed, and we actually continued with ACS, the proposed contract was $10.5 million to continue with them. Now, they did include the radio and telecom piece in that, and that did not include the HHSA MIS group. So, therefore, the total IT labor cost is $15 million. So, we end up, in this case, with a savings of $5.5 million as we look forward. So, transitional costs. What are the transitional costs that we have before us today? During that six-month window of notification during that transition, I have identified seven positions, roughly coming out to about $1.5 million, and I've done that over a nine-month period. Rental office space, I've done this for an entire year, averaging, essentially it's about $35,000, and we've identified over at the WID that there is some space that we can rent from them. So, a total transitional cost of about $535,000.
Sure. Does that include CalCap?
I don't know right offhand. I think it... Yeah, I think that it goes out to the different departments, yes, but I'll have to double-check Additional examples of county-wide cost savings. So, we've talked about these in the past, I just want to bring a couple of them back to you. Voice-over-IP should result in at least a saving of $600,000 a year once fully implemented. We are now on the verge of implementing voice-over-IP today. HHSA is currently in the process of pushing forward voice-over-IP in the works environment. And so, as they push forward, they're launching it this calendar year. At the same time, we are doing a parallel project with the county, or the rest of the county, non-HHSAA, that is doing the same thing, mirroring what they're doing, as well as our child support area is moving into voice-over-IP. So, we are moving rapidly into an end result of moving on to the voice-over-IP network, and once we do that, we begin to see the savings.
Before we move on, Eric. Chairman, I was going to ask, of that particular issue, now, you're saying county-wide, so that's not all general fund dollars. Obviously, a good chunk of that is health and human services, the funds.
Correct. We run, I believe it's about $8,000 to $10,000 a month on local long-distance calls that we can eliminate, as well as a lot of extra lines that we have that provides the rest of the $600,000 figure.
So, roughly, would you figure half of that would be general fund dollars, or is that...
I would have to look at what HHSA actually pays, but I could just guess and say, yeah, about half. And these are just our landline phone bills. Now, the other piece to that, which is talking about the landline phone bills, we currently are actually paying ACS to manage this for us. It costs us $65,000 a year. Pull this in-house and have us manage the phone bills, we save that money. Managing the hardware and software maintenance agreements, we have at least a savings of $180,000. There is a markup fee for maintaining and managing the contracts for us by ACS, so we can also save in this space. Recently, your board approved the purchase of an internet traffic tool called WebSense, which saved the county $56,000. I know this doesn't sound like a lot compared to the others, but this is a lot of money. And if we think about what we could have done, we could have had two organizations purchasing the same product without really working together and ended up spending $56,000 more. So, that's the benefit of doing this together. Although the efforts really require an initial investment, there is to be projected a quick ROI in the amount of about $845,000 in the first fiscal year. So, the savings that we talked about, that 2.4 that I put before you earlier, really doesn't get realized in our first fiscal year because we have that six-month window we need to stick with ACS. Once we go past that, then that's where we begin to see our savings, and then the full amount in the second fiscal year. So, other county success stories. One of those, in 2006, Solano County, they moved many IT strategic functions in-house, such as web, finance, and project management. In 2000, Mendocino County brought all of their IT in-house and is now selectively sourcing, like what I'm proposing for you today. As well as Butte County did the same thing, they moved IT in-house and they're now selective sourcing. The trend in California is not toward fully outsourcing IT in the common sense. The trend is actually leading in the direction of selective sourcing and keeping all major end functions in-house. This has been the trend that we have been looking at and watching, not only in the environment, in the public sector, you see a lot more big outsourcing environments taking So, what kind of timeline are we looking at? Well, if we look at a 12-month snapshot, starting in July, we're looking at stabilizing IT right up front. I believe as we move forward today, and depending on your decision, what we ought to, what we end up doing is bringing everybody into the light of what we're doing with IT, centralizing it and getting on track with where we're heading. That then pushes us into consolidating IT at the same effort as we do this. Once we begin to consolidate, we can then really look at what we need to do with the organization. It's difficult when it's all dispersed in several different areas today. Without it together, we can't really focus on that. Once we do that and begin that process, we start redesigning IT. Now, that starts getting into the picture that I showed you previously. That picture then starts to consolidate into that space and redesigning how we actually do IT. And the way I view IT, it's a changing world. Our org chart will never be the same from one month to the next if we're actually doing our jobs right, because it should be moving and changing with technology. Implementing customer-driven IT, this is something that at the very end is going to make us successful, so we have to come from a customer standpoint, because really, IT doesn't exist without users. And so, now, the security people actually would like that no users were there, but we would actually not have a business to run if we didn't have our users. So, we have to serve them, and we've got to make sure that we do it from a customer-driven standpoint. And one thing that I would add to this is the organization should actually live by service-level agreements. My expectation is that we will put service-level agreements, or what they refer to as SLAs, in order to set benchmarks of where we actually go, what we do, and how we manage this world. It's the only way to say, yes, we've been successful, or no, we haven't been. So, what are the requested actions that I'm asking you today? One, authorize the CAO to give ACS six-month written notice of termination of agreement. Authorize the CAO to negotiate an interim IT agreement. Subject to meet and confer requirements, authorize merging of radio and telecom employees into the Chief Information Technology Office. Subject to necessary classification and compensation specifications by the CAO and HRD, a proven concept the change of the Chief Information Technology Officer from a Management Unit 11 Assistant Department Head to a Management Unit 10 Department Head, and a proven concept the following classifications and allocations, one IT administrative services officer, an IT project manager, IT telecommunications manager, and IT administrative specialist. Lastly, direct the CAO in consultation with the HRD to return to the board of suit, to return to your board the appropriate personnel resolution for these classifications and allocations, and a proven concept the expenditure of transitional costs, and direct a plan for expending such costs be brought back to your board as soon as possible. And now, it's your turn.
Thank you, Eric. Do you have any questions, Eric?
One, maybe.
One, maybe. I was once, remain once, image of intelligence in talking about IT. I don't know, but one quick question, Eric. And I only know this because I'm taking notes here. You mentioned the data center, network equipment, network connection points, all of that, and the SAN. Do we currently back each other up? You know, I know we're factioned and we're in different places. What's the information backup situation that we have now, and will that change?
It will change in a different kind of way, although we are set where we do back up our current data center, our main data center, in the... For the county, non-HHSA in the basement of the courthouse, that's backed up over in our WID building, and it backs up our systems there. And then, those tapes are stored off-site. The HHSA world, which is down the street in the Government Plaza, primarily their data center, has replication over into a disaster recovery site across the street. So they have a little bit different environment, which enables us to... It's a little bit better. And they also have backups for their environment as well. So we're covered in that space. Where it will go is that we have the potential to back each other up in two different sites to actually have live failover, so you, the user, would never know that something occurred, except the rest of us are all scrambling around.
Well, I, the user, may not understand a lot of these things, as long as someone else does.
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I could add, Los Angeles currently backs up on the Orange County computers, so there's the opportunity even back up outside of the geographic confines of the county.
In fact, a good example was Katrina that you mentioned earlier. Katrina, actually, the city of New Orleans backed up over into Orange County, I believe. And they actually never missed a heartbeat once everything was buried over there in water. The city of Orange was able, or the... I believe they were able to get their systems up and running and provide paychecks to employees, so it wasn't really a hiccup at all.
Sure. It strikes me, there's really two major issues here. One is, of course, our long-term contract with our outsourced, primary outsourced provider, ACS. The other is interior, because, as you point out, we have a lot of different data centers that are not necessarily run by ACS, but they're run... They are in-house, but instead of being centralized, they're dispersed. And then, you have, outside of true IT, you have telephones and so forth, which have been administered under the umbrella of the Resource Management Agency. So there's a lot of balls in the air, if you will, in this whole process. And I know some of it had to be done confidentially because of contractual relationships and so forth. Some of it, not necessarily so much, because it was in-house. But I saw Henry stand up out there, and so I... I'm... Henry expressed to me a concern, which he probably will share in a moment perhaps, but that he was unaware of this item until it was actually on the agenda, you know, and saw the agenda item. There may have been some informal discussions, there may have been some sort of, you know, somewhere, sometime, we're looking at folding it in. I know I've heard this for a long time, because of the changing technology, folding in telephones in with IT and so forth, and the voice-over ID system, that certainly makes sense. But I guess, as you think about change, communication is a very critical part of that change, and it appears that there may have been some breakdown there in that particular situation, and I don't know about the others, because obviously, as you say, you've got the sheriff, you've got Health Human Services, you have all these different dispersed. And I just want to make sure that we are upfront about those things, and make sure that people understand that this is not an intent to, you know, hurt people's feelings or take something away from them unnecessarily, but that there is a good business reason for making these changes. And at the bottom line of it, there are people. You know, there are people who are in these positions, who are doing this job, they're either working for ACS, they're working for Health Human Services, or Resource Management Agency. And as we talk about consolidation, what happens to those people? Where do they go? Now, obviously, people who work for somebody else, we can't really make any kind of commitments to those folks because they work for another company. But for those who work with, inside the county, what assurances do they have that, you know, that their job doesn't just disappear because all of a sudden, it no longer is in the Resource Management Agency, but now it's housed in, you know, under IT? So I just wondered if that has been, if that's been addressed. I realize we're at the... At this point in time, we're still talking about... The plan is still in progress, and we're not saying it's going to happen tomorrow. It's going to happen over time. But I just wonder if we have, if you've thought about that and have a plan for dealing with that.
Absolutely.
Long question, sorry to...
And I'll try to keep it short. As we look at a lot of different things, and you have addressed several different issues, one of those with, in fact, with the telecom and radio organization. I have actually been in contact with them over the past year as we've talked about this. And it has been more of one of those things where we are going to do it, we're going to do it, and finally, today was the day that we actually are doing it. Yes, you are correct, there may have been some miscommunication, although I know in Henry's staff, they've been aware of this coming. I've been in contact with the telecom and radio group as well, so they do know what's been coming. They're very good at asking questions, which is, and my office has always been open for that, so. Looking at where we're heading, again, with confidentiality, with certain things as we do some planning, and with my current vendor, there are certain things that I can't necessarily speak freely of, but I'm able to speak enough candidly that I can and I have. Along with other departments of where we're heading, as we've looked at IT and began to consolidate several departments, we have been in contact with going through what is coming and what's going. So I know with, working with John over in HHSA, they're well aware of what the plans are, and I think addressing John's concerns were more from the standpoint of, how are we going to affect his environment? Because as we begin to look at merging that into a centralized IT, how's it going to affect him? And that's a huge issue. It's also an issue in my book, because I don't want to disrupt the county as we do this. Unfortunately, we are going to in some instance, but we have to mitigate that as much as possible, and that's what I've been planning for.
Have you had discussions with the various folks about FAFR's employees transitioning over? If we're talking about consolidation, they would perhaps cease to work for Resource Management Agency, and they would be working under the IT umbrella, or something of that nature?
Yeah, one of the...
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, there's a legal issue there that we need to address, and I'd suggest that that not be discussed at this time.
You know, this issue is not as big as moving from CDF to County Fire, but it's very... It's almost as important. That's why I see so many department heads here today. That's why I think the board would like to hear from the departments that'll be affected, your concerns, or your support, or where you actually fit into this move. This is a good forum to do it. It's not a public hearing, but this is a subject we do want to hear from you. And Henry, you're the first guy that stood up, so come on down.
Consolidated phones under IT at a prior board action.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board, Henry Hatch, Resource Management Agency, we do support the concept of merging radio, telecom, and IT. I am here just to give you a little bit of a history about radio and telecom, since it falls under RMA, and some of the newer board members may not have all the history that Supervisor Worley and Conway may have. If I may, let me just give you a brief, few minutes' background about telecom and radio. You know, both telecom and radio were troubled areas a few years back. This is one of the concerns that the board members that are here today, Supervisor Worley and Conway, expressed to me in my very first few days. And once I looked into it, I certainly understood why. The reason was really, high cost to our customers and not necessarily great services. In early 2004, the hourly rate for our customer was 139 dollars per hour. Later that year, we reduced it to 106 dollars an hour. I directed my staff, then Deb West, to do a survey to see what is the rate among all the private and public sector for this service. This is about two years ago, two and a half years ago, and it came back, and the answer was 77. 77 dollars per hour, that was the average rate that was being charged for this service. And as you know, my philosophy has been, if we cannot compete and beat the private sector, maybe we need to get out of the business and let somebody else handle it. Because of that, and that's exactly what I directed my staff to do. So we said, well, let's try to see what we can do. We tried to reorganize and merge a few things, and we reduced the rate from 106 dollars per hour to 69 dollars per hour. Being proactive, and we have great staff in RMA that are really on top of things, we realized three years ago that the way technology is going, it will be not in the distant future, really it is now, that telecom, radio, and IT will eventually merge. And exactly based on that, we did some reorganization. We combined telecom and radio, and reduced the rate one more time to 50 dollars per hour. That's perhaps the lowest rate you see around. The 50 dollars per hour rate has been in effect for two years, and RMA has no plan to increase it because we have great efficiency. One of the things we did, because our customers were concerned about whether they have the best radio service. In 2005, we issued an RFP, based on the request of our internal customers. And I said to my staff that if we want to stay in business, we compete with the private sector. We did. An independent committee was formed to select the best candidate, and they did choose the best candidate that's most qualified, efficient, and for cost savings in the county, and I'm proud to say that, they chose radio of RMA. So these are... The reason I'm saying today that we are really, we have this division, like a well-oil machine, it's working well. We brought, really, our staff was known to as a staff that outsources everything and not provide most efficient service, to a staff that does everything in-house creatively, not necessarily outsource, customer-service oriented. And that's where we are today. We are very, very supportive of this proposal, really, because we care deeply about our staff. My regret is that it was not better communication with RMA so we could help a more smooth transition. As myself, I didn't know anything until Assistant RMA Director Hal Cyper told me about this last week. So we are here today to say we are going to support, and we'll do anything we can do to assure a good, smooth transition. I just would like to thank your board for supporting us all along to make this a true success story, and it is. I want to thank you, Mr. Hal Cyper, and Arthur Rosso, our Communication Manager, really have gone out of their way to make a troubled area to a very, very successful area, and I'll be happy to answer any and all questions that you may have.
Henry, I'm glad that that's running so well, because we don't want to bring everything broken into this deal, so we appreciate it.
Morning, Mr. Davis.
Thank you for the opportunity and the request to come up and speak to this. I just want to make sure that I can echo Eric in this regard. The agency is a big player, obviously, and he's graciously given us a lot of credit for a lot of the innovations that we have done over the years, so thank you for that. My concern, as he tried, as it was described, is that we have a lot of business processes that we obviously have put in place, and they're intertwined with systems. We brought to you, I think, over a year ago, a system that cost the state a billion dollars to put in place. It took five years to do it in county, and a god-awful number of staff to make that transition. We have some systems that are dedicated, that is to say, the state runs them, our child welfare services and the rest. So we're literally bound up with the information, the technology that we use. And that business process, I've been talking to Eric about for about a year, in terms of which people go, which people don't. Some people are actually brought up, say, through our artillery works project, they actually know the business processes, and then they move to IT. Those individuals are very important to us, they know our business. So how that issue gets addressed is extremely important. The other one, which I think two of the supervisors alluded to in the presentation, is the funding and how that goes. And I've had discussions with Eric, I've had discussions with the CAO, and the issue is out there. We ran a lot of deals with the state in terms of subventing, and when you use the word, I knew you were on topic, because we... How that works and how that plays out as you actually fund up this program, we need to keep an eye to, to see whether it'll actually be sustainable. And then, the distinction, of course, which is out there, and again, the board made the comment, and I would just like to reiterate it, is that there's two issues on the table for your board, and we need to look at them. I'm looking at them, obviously, from a very different point of view. ASC runs out here, that's your board's issue, and it's a contract piece. The I... Excuse me, the HHSA in-house, it is in-house, it is yours, and we'll follow wherever the board leads, and we'll do as best we can. We're right with Henry in that regard. So those were the only two issues that we raised with the officer and with the CAO, and I think we're working on both of them. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address this issue?
Is it general comments, or...
Pardon?
Anybody.
It's general, we're not having... It's not a public hearing, but addressing this issue. Yeah, anybody can.
I'm Jerry Carroll, I currently work in IT. And in 1979, I joined the county and in the data processing department. At that time, during the 10 years before the outsourcing, you know, I was associated with a lot of good people and a lot of dedicated staff, and we talked about some of those people today, Glenn Ingles, Gar Roseros, as well as a number of others. Through no fault of our own, in 1989, we were outsourced. We were privatized. For me, I still have the same desk I've always had. And I'm celebrating my 28th year as a county employee and doing the county's business. I see nothing in this proposal that addresses the employees directly, you know? It's always going to happen, and I'm real concerned about the six-month time period. We're working for ACS, we're ACS employees, we have a lot of choice, we have to make our house payments, we're... We can't be hired by the county because of whatever legal restrictions are there. We are dedicated employees, and I'm not speaking so much myself. At 28 years, 40 years in data processing, I'm getting ready to hang it up. But there are a lot of people that have put in 15, 20, 25 years here at the county, that it would be a shame to have those folks have to leave after six months with ACS and apply as new county employees with no consideration given for the time and service that they put in here, right? I would just hate to see that happen. And whatever can be done, I'd just like to remind the board that, you know, when we first privatized, they really did consider the employees, the county. We brought forward our hire date, we were able to maintain our vacation, we had sick leave that we carried forward, and these sort of things. Even though we lost our retirement benefits and some of the other things, we had some compensating. Over the years, at least for me, my retirement went from my county retirement, which I still have, down to a 6% 401K, down to 3%, down to 2%... folks that have been here, and they gave up their retirement during these 18, 19 years of the outsourcing, that should have some opportunities to recover some of that. I understand that the county can't give them 18 years, but to give them some consideration in terms of maybe the ability to buy a couple of years and so on. Like me, I could buy back nine months, and I'd have 10 years in. But, you know, it's just, so anyway, I'd like to just bring to the board's attention that these are loyal employees, and there's a number of us that have been here through the whole thing, right? And one other, just small side note, the reason we consolidated, the reason that we outsourced originally was to consolidate departments. And it's been hard as a contractor to keep that in place, but as a county department, it's much easier, directed by the CAO, to keep that in, to keep that consolidation in place. And so personally, I think it works better as a county department, but I'm not, it doesn't make a lot of difference to me either way. I think that it's the employees, and it's the same people, it's a change in management philosophy, we're still doing the same work, and we're doing the same things. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add real quickly, I think this gentleman raised some very good points. You know, we as a county are just buildings if it weren't for the people inside, and I would commit to Mr. Prosser to address some of these concerns.
Hey, I'm going to bring it back to the board. You know, I have a comment. When I worked for a major corporation years ago, when DOS was out there, and you just converted to, okay Conway, we converted to, you know, Microsoft. We had an IT guy in our office. In fact, almost every office had an IT guy in their office, because they took the baby boomers who did not have skills with a computer. So we were just kind of lost, and we always, we had a staff person sitting there to help us gear up. But what happened in that whole scenario is that we probably had several hundred, maybe a thousand people in the city of Fresno that were performing that function. But what ended up happening, as we geared up as employees on the use of the computer, our IT guy did not progress to the next level to give us meaningful information. So there were thousands of jobs, and there was a point in time, because of education, self-education, that we didn't need them. But there were thousands of jobs that were lost, and this was nationwide, because the person got entrenched in a company, and everybody needed them, but it got to the point where we outgrew them. And that's why I think the county department I'm leading into is that, on a county basis, Mr. Prosser, I believe that education for our employees, to send them out to some of these seminars to get new ideas, is extremely important to the growth of your IT department. Conversely, too, is that we need a manager that sits there and says, this is not what we used to call, can't remember, we used to have management go to these management seminars and come back with these wonderful, great ideas that we'd have to live with for two years and find out they didn't work. So, you know, there's that part of the job of the head IT guys, you can't bring every idea back from these seminars and try to implement them. But I do think an important part of this department creation is a budget for education for our employees in that department.
I completely agree. It's one of those areas that I think IT people almost depend on, and it's one of the departments that changes so rapidly. For instance, we're looking at a 17-year window. In the last five years, things have changed so drastically, or even 10 years, if you kind of think about it, a device that is just a telephone that now does all kinds of things was probably worth $3,000, $4,000 a little bit ago, and now they're giving them away free. You can buy a printer today, and you're basically paying for print cartridges, you're not paying for the hardware that it was built on.
Mine's worth a whole lot more to me, I'm sorry.
Well, I think 10 years ago, many of us used the computer as a Rolodex.
Exactly.
So, that was our main function with the computer, which we progressed since then through necessity.
And education is a big part of this.
Other comments?
Just for, if I can, real quick, that was one of the first concerns I had, when Jerry came up and talked about the, you know, other employees that have been there for so long, that was one of my concerns, and I were probably treading on this, on the shaky ground here, Counselor, but let me do it anyways. That was one of my concerns, is that, is that we just not disregard the folks that were there, and look, and, you know, make sure that we do take care of the people that need to stay, and that we work, you know, with them and look at that, and just not, you know, discard them. So I think Haddix, Mr. Haddix said it properly, we need to look closely at that, at what we're going to do with those people, because I don't think we need to just totally discard that.
I think basically what it is, what Mr. Cox is trying to say, is a people issue too.
It's a people issue.
Mr. Chairman, can I just address generally, as someone who's been here, you know, I'm in my 27th year, this is not the first time that the county has privatized out or brought private services back in as a county service. And while there are specific legal issues relating to this, based on the historical treatment, which was alluded to by the gentleman who spoke, the county has always attempted to protect the employees going out or coming back in. I am sure that we will assist the CAO staff and Mr. Prosser to negotiate something which will hopefully allow the county to do that with the employees who are working for us.
Thank you. This is an extra item. That is to give ACS six-month notice.
Mr. Chair, I would make the recommendation, the motion that we approve the item as recommended by staff, items one through six.
And I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Public comments? Okay, Board Matters, Ms. Renus.
Well, I had an opportunity last week to go by the Newcombe Fire Station in Porterville and watch our new fire department training and...
Did you pull some hose?
No, I didn't do anything. Those guys, they'd had to bring in...
The ambulance.
Yeah.
They were prepared to deal with it.
They had medical training.
Because I'll tell you, I try to keep in shape, but let me tell you, these little boys were, but it really, a good group of people, really eager to learn, most of them very well experienced. I think we're going to have a fire department that we're all going to be proud of, so. I really appreciate the effort that Steve has put in and all the organization to get this thing rolling, so it's coming up pretty quick, July 1st.
Ms. Worley?
Just to let you know, as of last week, California Air Resources Control Board met in Fresno last Thursday, and one of the items that was of significance was our eight-hour ozone plan that had been adopted by our San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board, was presented to the state CARB, and they approved the plan. It will now be advanced to the federal EPA, and if it's approved there, then that will become the implementation plan for, the eight-hour ozone plan for the San Joaquin Valley. And as you all know, that we've paid much attention to that issue, that's been, not without its controversy. But contrary to the comment that we're waiting for 18 years to clean up the air, the air is getting better, and it's 80% better now than it was 25 years ago, and so we're now tackling, to meet the federal standards, we have to go after the last 75% of the remaining 20%. So that is not going to be an easy task, and it will take time and hard work, but I'm optimistic that we will get there. So that's the latest on the air quality front, and I guess that's all I have to say.
Supervisor Cox?
I think some of you know, last week, we received a phone call from my son's mission president, who's back in Massachusetts, said he blew his knee out and might have to come home for surgery. That was on Tuesday. On Thursday morning, we received a phone call to pick him up Friday afternoon at Fresno Airport. So we have our youngest son back with us for about three months while he goes through knee surgery, recuperates, and then we'll send him back to Massachusetts.
Oh, it continues.
Yeah, we weren't expecting another kid at home last week.
But you're fully equipped to deal with that, Supervisor.
No, we weren't. We had to completely remodel the room.
Come on. Last week, actually, through the California partnership, but here in the county, we helped host the Alternative Fuel Seminar, along with Tulare County Department of Education and College of Sequoia's Voc Tech Department Supervisor, and this I know was there for part of the day. It's very interesting, it kind of, it dovetails on the 2525 theme, Mr. Chairman, from the meeting that we were in in Sacramento, basically that there's a lot of alternative fuels this might, California and this valley in particular, might greatly benefit from development, and we certainly possess some of the raw materials to make those alternative fuels happen, and I'm not just talking about manure, Supervisor Ennis. We have other fuels in the county besides that, even though we have a lot of manure.
Quit disparaging the board.
I'm not. You took that personally, Supervisor. I was just going to tell you that, just remember that one of your state senators that doesn't represent you personally, but likes to weigh in on decisions made by the valley, says that, you know, you should do the right thing.
Does represent the...
Yeah, whatever that, whatever that is. And the only other thing I have to report, because I'm dragging this out, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, is that tomorrow I'll be speaking to about 50 city managers about the OPEB's Commission, the other Post-Employment Benefits Commission, which is actually turning out to be just a pension benefits commission that was created by the governor. Those plans, all the work that's been done by the commission so far, we certainly don't have any recommendations, but we're moving towards that. A lot of that relying on facts and statistics provided by local governments, state government, and all the employees within, but certainly public testimony at these hearings. There will be one held locally, I believe in three months, we will be in Fresno, but it's on the Department of Finance's website, anyone that wants to read staff reports up until now, what's been discussed, how to make comment or how to weigh in on that, that's certainly available. The interesting thing is, though, while they're all benefits, you may belong to PERS, which our county does not, but within that, there are 5,000 different formulas, so there's not just one formula for everyone, and I believe that will be the most extreme challenge that the commission will face, is making recommendations that can fully encompass 5,000 different plans. It's been interesting, it's been a learning experience, but I would recommend to folks that have the time to go to the Department of Finance website and kind of look at what's happening with those, especially if you have a government pension benefit of some kind. And that's enough from me.
Okay, thank you. During the last several weeks, I've received, and I've listened to many comments about how the county residents are happy that we passed Measure R. Our equipment is rolling, it's in our unincorporated communities, it's on our county roads, and I have not run across anybody negative through the passing of Measure R. It's, I think a lot of times that those who help themselves get the greatest reward, and Measure R is helping ourselves, it's our money, the state is threatening again to take our tax, gas tax dollars away from us through different formulas, but Measure R money stays in Tulare County. So I think we're very lucky to have that pass. And with that, I have nothing else to add. And Counsel, do we have any for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. Before I announce that, I would like to invite your board, the CAO, the, your board's clerk, and your various staffs, and anyone who works out here in the county who's still here to celebrate with the county council's office, Share Day, Sheriff Castellini's celebration in the Kiwi Quince Room from 2:00 to 3:00, she will be receiving admirers, and there is cake.
But we got pot.
Sharon will be sharing, yes. For the closed session, you have items A through D as listed on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you for the...
Should we keep any of this stuff? Four and five, agenda items are just this?
I was looking at you.
All four and five.
Well, good, I didn't know who to give it to.